First order of business is to elect a moderator.
Let's nominate Willie Fritz.
Second. Do I have any nominations?
Move nomination and close.
Second. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Both. None, no motion carries. All in favor of Willie Fritz as moderator?
Aye.
Both. None, no motion carries. All right, I'd like to ask Tom Clark to read the notice of the special town meeting. I need a microphone.
Legal notice, Town of Clinton's special town meeting. The electors of the Town of Clinton and all other citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of said Town of Clinton are hereby notified and warned that a special town meeting will be held at 6:30 PM on Thursday, November 12, 2015, at the William Stan Andrews Memorial Town Hall, 54 East Main Street, Clinton, Connecticut. To hear and consider the following. Resolved to authorize the fire department to spend not to exceed $600,000 for the purchase of a new fire truck, oh pardon, a new fire apparatus truck. Resolved to appropriate the adoption of the LowSAP, Life of Service Awards Program Plan, beginning January 2016 with an initial contribution of $120,000. Resolved to appropriate line item transfers totaling $392,589.49 as recommended by the Finance Director. Dated at Clinton, Connecticut, this 20th day of October, 2015. William W. Fritz Jr., first electman. Published in the Harvard News on November 5, 2015.
I'd ask Tom Clark to reread the second resolution because I believe she said January 2016 instead of July 2016. Yes?
Resolved to approve the adoption of the LowSAP, Life of Service Awards Program Plan Beginning July 2016 with an initial contribution of $120,000.
Okay. I need a motion to approve call as read.
No motion.
This is not a vote on any of the resolutions.
Second.
No second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both. None, no motion carries. Is approved. So we will jump down to the first resolution, which is to authorize the fire department to spend not to exceed $600,000 for the purchase of a new fire apparatus truck. Do I have a motion to approve?
No motion.
Second. Discussion on this resolution? Yes, sir?
Willie, hi. My name is Tom Hollinger. I'm having on the board of finance for over the last couple decades. I just have one question on this resolution. It's $600,000, but it doesn't seem to clarify where the money's coming from, whether it's from undidicated surplus, whether it's from another capital improvement program, or whether it's borrowed money. Can that be clarified?
That will be determined when the bid's coming. As of now, I'm consulting with the Finance Director, the option probably will be a lease purchase, not lease purchase, but finance purchase through the committee, through the vendor, like we did when we bought the pumper six years ago.
Is that something that we can approve now?
You can't amend that call.
Okay.
Any other comments? Hearing none?
Aye.
Favor?
Aye.
Both. None, no motion carries. Very good. Because I know the second one is a bit of a contentious issue, I would like to move the second resolution which regards the LowSAP. I'd like a motion to move that down on the agenda and bring up the budget transfers to number two. I have a motion to do that.
No motion.
Second. Discussion on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Both. None, no motion carries. Okay. So now we will jump into the approval line item transfers totaling $392,589.49 as recommended by the Finance Director. I will state that this does not include any money being taken out of undidicated fund balance to balance the budget. There is an encumbrance or a transfer from the Board of Ed, a surplus that will go towards balancing the expenditure side of the town budget. So I have a motion to approve.
No motion.
Second.
Second.
All right, discussion.
One question, what fiscal year is this for?
This is last year.
This is for the previous?
1450. Any other questions? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both. None, no motion carries. Very good. Okay. So now we move to the resolution to approve the adoption of the LowSAP, which is the Life of Service Awards Program Plan Beginning July 2016 with initial contribution of $120,000, which is basically a pension and/or 401/457K program for the volunteer fire department based on their qualifications. Motion approved.
No motion.
Second. All right, discussion, which I'm sure will be lively. Hearing none?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead.
This amount will be coming from, this will be part of the operating budget of the fire department?
The intent is to have included the 2015, 16 operating budget. This is not an appropriation at this point.
Right, okay, thank you.
Sir?
Only my children call me sir. I never call my daughter sir.
Yeah, hi. Wow, I wish we had this many people at all town meetings. I just want to address the elephant of the room, and that is that, you know, it is extremely hard, but firemen and policemen are among the most valued and revered people in our society and protect us. So it's very hard to even question a program like this. And before the election, it was totally impossible, but I think it's, viewing the audience here, I think it's just as difficult, you know, after the election. I just think we need to make sure we know what we're getting into. This is only the first round payment. I look at the sheet, which we got 10 minutes ago. It will be underfunded from day one, you know, one of the biggest problems in America. And even at the back, and I read an article about their finances, the biggest problem is underfunded pension plans. And this one will be underfunded from day one. So I just think we have to know what we're getting into. You know, it's a fine idea. Believe it or not, I was a volunteer fireman when I was considerably younger. And it's getting increasingly hard for our budgets to pass a referendum. So it's just, it's something that we gotta be aware of. Frankly, I would like to see it go a referendum, only to get more public buy-in. I mean, I know there's a lot of people here, but, you know, it's not really representative of the entire population. And I know you get a referendum, you get 20% out, but it's more than this. So I just, I look at this, I look at a couple items. It looks like it could be underfunded by one line says 793K, the other says 991. Also, they use an interest rate, meaning this is what you would earn on the money that's invested in this plan, they use 7.8%. In this day and age, that's totally unrealistic, which means it's even more underfunded than the report will say. So I would love to see it go a referendum. I think if it's a good plan and it withstands any questioning, it'll pass. That's probably not possible at this point in time that we're gonna vote on this, but, you know, I just think we need to go into it with our eyes open, and we've got a lot of debt service coming down the road. But, you know, who can be opposed to this? I know you've spent hundreds, many of you've spent hundreds, not thousands of hours to the fire departments to be applauded, and I applaud it, as I did at one time. So thank you for your service, and I just think some of the things I said need to be said, that's all. Thank you.
The other comment, question? Yes, sir?
Willie, hi. Tom Hollinger again. I'd like to just echo what Phil said. I don't think anyone believes that this is not honorable to do for the people who deserve it, but I think it needs the attention of a referendum. There are several hundred people here, which is good to see, but this is a change in the operation of this town, and I think the town should be involved in the process. I understand we're still a town meeting. We're still a town meeting for the budget, but that's always under referendum now as well. My other comment really just had to do with the funding of this. You're asking, can we approve a line item for next year's budget? That's gonna be approved when the budget's presented next May. I think it's premature to approve this now, and it should be approved when the entire budget is presented in May. Again, my thoughts and thank you.
Sir?
I'd like to speak, I'm not a citizen of Clinton.
You can speak.
Thank you. My name is J.T. Dunn. Many of you know me, I grew up in Clinton. I graduated high school here in 1988. I lived here until 1996, I moved to Old Sable. I just completed five years as their chief, I hit the term limit, so I can no longer be the fire chief there. Old Sable has had one of these plans since 1992. The town has seen significant success in the program and has made four modifications to the program since it started. Every 10 years or so, they give a cost of living increase to the plan. It started out at $165 per year of service at age 65, divided by 12. So if somebody had 10 years of service in 1992, when they turn 65, they would get $1,650 divided by 12 monthly payments. So that's how our plan works. 10 years later, they changed it, they give a cost of living increase to $215 per year of service. Today, it's now $270 per year of service, divided by 12. That's how you get your pension payment every year, but again, at age 65. The benefits have worked so well that they made two other additions. A pension plan doesn't cause people to join your fire department, but it causes them to stay in the fire department. When people join a fire department, they're motivated, they're excited, the adrenaline's there, you know, the whistle blows, "I want to be in that, I want to be on that fire department, I want to be on that ambulance." Then the people who do that don't necessarily realize that just to put the coat on and run into a burning building, you need 200 hours almost, I think it's 180 now, hours of basic firefighter one training before the state of Connecticut says they legally can go into a burning building. That kind of dampens the excitement a little bit for that person, you know, they thought, you know, all I gotta do is join, put the gear on, we're ready to go. The difference between Clinton and Old Sable is in Clinton, your fire department handles the ambulance. So I'm the old, I was the old Sable fire chief, I have 98 members in our fire department. We do under 500 calls a year, under 500 times, my pager goes off. The town thinks that's a lot, we think that's a lot. Clinton, it's like 1,600 times your pagers go off, because all of your firemen go to every single medical call. We don't do that in Sable. So we have a pension program to keep our people motivated and staying in the department with just 500 calls a year. You people have a fire department of whatever number it's at now, and their pagers, 24 hours a day, 1,600 times a year, that pager goes off. So the town of Sable did two things. They added an officer incentive, because if you volunteer, now you're already in the fire department, medically trained, that's another 200 hours, above your 180 firefighting hours. You get in the fire department, first couple, two, three years, you're excited, you come to the firehouse, you go to fire calls, you do your stuff. After a while, it does kind of wear on you, those 1,600 times that your pager goes off a year in Clinton. Because like I tell you, it wears on people in Sable, the 500. So you want to keep them. You've just invested a lot of money in training. An EMT course now is $1,000 from buying the book to taking the state exam, $1,000 per person, and it's six months to take the class. It follows the college terms, you know, your semester, six months. Firefighter one, that other class, costs hundreds of dollars as well, probably close to $1,000. You have to pay money to the state, you buy your books, exams, the whole thing. It's no longer, when I joined the fire department in 1986, I remember going to the pediatrician, that's a Pierceville school, and I had to give him a medical form, "Will not die of heart attack in the next year." Doctor signs, I'm in, I'm there. It's no longer that way, it's a completely different situation now. The training is required by state statute. So now, they're in, they're trained, they've gone through all that stuff, they're in the fire department, what keeps them there? What keeps them there is after four, five, six years, they say, hey, my kid's getting older, I gotta do Little League, I gotta do football, I got another job, my wife doesn't want me to hang out at the firehouse anymore, or her husband, whatever. But now they're thinking up, if I stay, I can get vested in this pension, because as time goes on, these 20-year-olds, 22, you've all been there, you're 22, you're 23, 24, you hit the 26, you realize now, sometime you want to retire in life. You need to make investments now, you need to save money, you know what bills are like. So now you need to save money, what are you gonna do when you retire? These kind of programs do not cause people to join your fire department, but they cause people to stay in your fire department. Think of anybody who used in the National Guard, the Army Reserve, when they did their one term, two terms, maybe, you know, it's a little different, because those people can go to war, say, "Wait, I don't want to stay in." It's different than the fire department, but think of the same idea. They've been in the fire department now six years, but they can be vested at 20 and know that tack on to their social security payment, or wherever they're working, this little something they're gonna get at age 65. It keeps them in, and it keeps your bet for the buck that you spent to train them in town, it's here. Couple other things to mention. You need them to come to train, you need them to go to calls, not just because if you have an emergency, you like them to show up at your house, but because your fire department gets inspected every 10 years by an organization called ISO. Sable does, every town does in the entire country. They measure, they inspect every compartment on every fire truck, they look at the age of every fire truck, they check the hose testing, the pump testing, the air pack testing, and they check the certifications of every firefighter in your building, how many hours they spend every year in training and going to calls, and they weigh that against the national average, and that helps determine what you pay for your fire taxes and your insurance for your businesses and profits. I happen to be lucky enough to be the chief during the last inspection in Old Sable. We handed the guy two floor and train binders of all the documents for them to then go back and determine what our rating is. So we stayed a four in our hydrogen areas, and we increased to an 80 in our nine hydrogen areas. There's not many volunteer fire departments in Connecticut that are four, it's not a lot. A lot of paid fire departments are three or two. You need to look at this payment, whatever it is. Sable, we put $127,000 a year into our pension. Couple points, no pension is fully funded on day one, I've never heard of that. I believe I just read that the state of Connecticut looks for their annual increase in their investments at like 8.1, they're gonna modify that slightly, because they realize 8.1 might be a little aggressive, I just read it in the paper recently. But we put $127,000 a year into that fund. So when I went to the board of finance recently and I said, hey, we're vested at 10, we're fully vested at 25, we'd like to increase that to 30 years, because, you know, I like to make that incentive last a little longer, let people earn pension years up to 30 years. And they thought about, you know, the economy's tough, but they realized something, say, look, here's what it is. The volunteer fire department, the members of that organization do it because of their goodwill for the town and for each other and the department. They're not required to do it, they could all quit tomorrow, they really could, and you would have to pay an entire fire department. Here's the difference, and that's what I explained to the board of finance in Sable, what I explained to the pension board in Sable, and they fully get it, they're fully invested in this. $127,000, $4 million. There's two cans, we all talk, you know, let's kick that can down the road a little bit, we may do the LowSAP next year. Every time you do one of those things, every time a couple guys quit the fire department, or their numbers drop a little bit more, you're inching that bigger can of $4 million for your paid fire department closer and closer to today. I don't know when you're gonna go to a career fire department, I don't know when Sable's gonna go to a career fire department, but if you ask me if we're gonna fully volunteer fire department 13 years from now, I'd say, I really don't know, because you're begging them to come to things now. I don't know the answer to that. But think of the can, you're kicking $127,000 a year can, or whatever your LowSAP program costs, maybe down the road a little bit more, because times are tough now. In Sable, I don't know how it is here, we can take your education out of your budget, your biggest municipal budget is the police department, right? That's what it is, that is your biggest dollar. Sable, I think our police is 3 million, something like that. You have however many guys you have on the road, men and women, no matter what you have on the road for a police department, you will have more firefighters on the shift, because you need a minimum of four people on duty 24 hours a day to send the first guy into a burning building by state ball. There's OSHA requirements, two in, two out. And that's not including your chief, not including maybe the guy driving the truck. So when your volunteers no longer have that goodwill, or no longer can find the time, or no longer are motivated to stay in because of whatever reason, and let's just remember, we used to get a $1,000 tax advantage from the towns, which we still get, but now the federal government taxes that as income. So I get a W-2 from the town, and I gotta pay, you know, $300 in taxes on my $1,000 tax advantage. So for anyone here thinking that that's, you know, that 88 hours a month makes me spend all those hours at the firehouse, it's awesome, it's appreciated. It's awesome, and it's appreciated, and it is better than, you know, my neighbor who doesn't volunteer. But remember, you as a community, your biggest thing is to put as many speed bumps in front of going to a paid full-time fire department as you can. Because that first year of $4 million, because again, you have to have more firefighters on duty than the police do on any given shift. That first year of $4 million, how many years of a pension in $150,000 a year would that have funded?
Why do you keep raising the number?
It's $4 million for paid fire department.
120?
Well, I don't know, what's your number? What is your number?
It's potentially 120 this money.
All right, so, okay, you guys run the ambulance, you have more members in it than we do.
We don't run the ambulance. We don't all have work.
No, but we're 98 members, you guys have more than 98 in your department, because you run the ambulance. And you do 1,600 calls a year. But think big picture, the $150,000, how many years of a pension could you have paid for that first year you went to a paid fire department, 15, 10 years? And it's incremental, I'll tell you how it's gonna happen. You're gonna start to lose enough people, they're gonna start paying your fire chief a stipend of like $30 a year.
Let's not get, let's not get into the hypothetical.
All right, can I pause the question?
Yeah, enough time, partner, I think we got your point. Thank you very much.
No, no, no.
I appreciate it. That's good, thank you very much. Washington and filibuster. I know we're gonna be here, the sun's gonna come up.
You should be the party.
Are we paying $120,000 a year in 216? Are we paying that same amount in 218? In 220?
The proposal now is the initial investment, and I'll get the process with Mr. Hollinger that asked about before. The proposal now, the initial investment's $120,000, based on the actuary report, it's about $90,000, no, $400 a month, it's $79,357,000 a year for active, subsequent. Okay. The proposal, the process would be, and I can address Tom's comment, this would be part of the operating budget, but in order to get to that, this has to be done as an ordinance, this has to be brought to a public hearing and done as an ordinance. In order us to go forward to do that, we have to have the town meeting to allow for that, because there's money involved. Okay, then the next step would be for a committee to come up with the plan, actual plan, what it's gonna be, and here we are, go to a public hearing as an ordinance, okay? And then the selectman have to vote to approve the ordinance. At that point, if the ordinance is approved, it becomes part of the operating, it does not go to a referendum, it becomes part of the operating budget. And based on the public hearing, it may not make it. This is to allow for, to go forward with the process, to draft an ordinance, come forward with it, and go to public hearing.
If I understand you correctly, the answer to my question is no. In 2017, it won't be 120, in 2018, it won't be 120.
You know what it'll be? It'll be based on the actuary looking at the numbers year to year, like we have for the police pension, and saying, this is your annual rate of contribution to that plan, which is the R. So right now, the estimate is $79,357 after the initial $120. Okay, any other questions, Tom?
I think you had a hand over here?
What?
No?
No, you want a follow?
Were you gonna answer your question?
I just wanted to point out some of the differences between, you know, what J.T. said with the old Sable department and our department. If I could just say five words.
You can take five, you're an attorney, I don't think you can take five. Five nights, man.
Do I need a line call?
Yes.
So I'm Lynn Hollinger, I'm the chairman of the LowSAP, we've been meeting for about two and a half years. And I just want to point out a couple of small things. One fire department first came to us, they actually proposed a $500 per month plan, and it actually would have started at age 55 for a early retirement, and they were asking to be vested after 10 years of service. The other thing they asked for was a life annuity, survivor benefits, and some other things. The committee actually got them to concede that we would agree to $400 a month, age 65, no cost of living increase, and no survivor benefit. So some of the things that J.T. talked about, vested after 20 years. After 20 years, not 10. So I just want to point out that there were a lot of concessions made, and there is a difference between our department and the old Sable department, because he did talk about a lot of things that I think might have scared people, like hollers and going back and, you know, increasing the amount and all that kind of thing. This is based on a $400 a month maximum benefit, so you don't get, after, you know, 30 years, get more earlier. The other thing I want to point out is that this is just not a pension. What's gonna happen over time is we are phasing out the LowSAP pension portion of this and phasing in a 457E program. So what that means is, what we've done with the fire department at this point is said, okay, we have this number of active members, not many of you want the $400 a month benefit, and they chose that. And those guys are locked into the $400 a month benefit. Everyone who did not choose that is locked into a $1,000 per year contribution to a 457E, which they'll be vested in after five years. Any new member of the fire department after this day must take the $1,000 per year 457E contribution and will not go into the LowSAP program. So I just want everyone to understand that this pension portion of this is gonna phase out over time.
Something else will die tomorrow.
And the only other thing I wanted to point out, and just to let everybody know, is we just kind of did a survey of the surrounding area, and pretty much every town in our area, including Kelly, North Madison, North Madison, Old Line, obviously Old Sable, West Grove, they all have a LowSAP plan in place. And, you know, we're doing more calls than most of them, and we're at $400 a month, we're on the low end of what these guys are offering, what these towns are offering to our guys. So I just kind of wanted to point out some differences from what J.T. talked about, and if you guys have any questions, then, okay.
Anybody else?
How many people will begin getting this pension of $400 a month next year, a year after, a year after that?
Ten. Nine.
Is there a buyout for people that have been, that are 40 and younger, that have been in service for 20 years?
There's no buyout. We talked about that in the committee, but we decided not to do that.
Yes. Kathleen?
I'm a little confused now, because it sounded like Lynn just told us this program is already in place.
No, sorry.
So what was the people signing up for the $1,000?
They have to pick their options, so that if it does go forward, they're locked into either the $1,000 or the $400. That's it, you can't change your mind, they've already elected. If it does go forward, they've elected to which one they're gonna get.
What if it doesn't go forward?
Then they have nothing. Anybody else?
Could I?
Kirk?
First of all, I'd like to echo what Phil said about the service of our fire department and also our policemen. These are our most important public servants, and they protect us. I also understand the importance of trying to maintain a volunteer as opposed to a really paid fire department. I think that's the best answer to taxpayers, and as somebody who speaks often for taxpayers, I would say that's a good thing. I think that the firemen are certainly very deserving. The one question I guess I have is, is how does a retroactive program accomplish the objective of attracting and retaining members of the fire department? I understand that the people who serve are deserving, I'm saying they're not deserving, but as a taxpayer, the question I have is, how does that attract and retain firemen? I think the answer is, it doesn't. I'm 100% behind a 457E. I have not been sold yet on the pension. I have not been sold yet on the pension, the fixed benefit. I don't think anybody's creating new fixed benefit programs in any kind of organization these days. I would even be willing to go back a year or two in being retroactive, but not 20 years. I mean, that just doesn't seem to be to serve the taxpayers in any way. I do agree, we want to do everything we can to keep a volunteer fire department, and keep it happy, and keep it fed, and keep it going, but I don't see what retroactive serves that purpose. Thank you very much.
In the back? Anybody else?
I'd just like to point out that the towns that Lynn mentioned that set up these programs did it between 1992 and 1998. So to answer Mr. Carr's question, the reason nobody is setting them up is because they were set up 20 years ago.
Something, Mike Chove, 31, Will Lake. I think if I was in the volunteer fire department right now, I'm currently a career firefighter in Guilford, and the numbers Chief brought up, about $4 million are right on per year. To answer your question, if I was a volunteer right now, and I was 10 years in, and I was vested, and I needed a reason to stay, why do I want to stay 10 more years? But I have two kids, I'm going to soccer, gymnastics, and I think if I had that apple